Ready? Call the order, the regular meeting of the Willington Board of Selectmen from March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you'd join me in the.
But we didn't. We apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes here, do I hear a motion to accept?
If the motion accept the minutes.
Second? Discussion?
I read this before meeting, I don't have any time on it. Is it normal practice for us to risk every single person who attends in the audience in the in the attendance of these meetings?
Uh, it was requested by a towns person, so that's why we did that was take. We, we can revisit that as a standard at some point. Anything else?
No, not else.
All in favor? Aye. Present to speak? Is anybody here present to speak?
You're gonna read the rules about that?
I don't have my rules here because I didn't write them down.
I have it.
Alright.
Wait one second.
I think I have it here. I got it. Public participation is encouraged, speakers are limited by appropriateness, staying on topic and maintaining the forum. Time may be limited to maintain progress, please request the reserve time during the meeting if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Anybody present to speak? Mr. Lutinsus?
Peter Lutinsus, ninety-seven Trask Road. I want to address two, two topics tonight to your board. One regarding the fire building committee and the second being the budget process of the current environment. With respect to the fire building committee that we have, for discussion of now, at your meetings, CIP meetings, and for finance meetings. I would encourage your board to compose a committee that represents our community. And I, I just can't stress this enough. It cannot be a committee of firefighters. We love our firefighters, they're wonderful people, but there is a distinction between a town building committee and the members of that committee and the functions of our fire departments. Building committees have their task, the fire companies have their task. So it's important that the majority of this committee be made up of townspeople. Certainly, we expect the fire plant to be a resource, but like all in past successful building committees in this town, I witnessed a couple of them in my thirty-five plus years here. When we built the town garage, certainly when we built the library, when we had the ADA committee for schools that made those modifications, these were all highly successful committees that completed their charge. And, and they were successful projects because they were composed of townspeople that were volunteers, worked together for a common purpose. What's instructive to us is what happened with the school building committee that I was a part of. I think one of the things that was not successful with that committee was that it was perceived by the town as a committee of educators and the educational group, for lack of a better word. It didn't reflect the community. They, they had a vision of what they wanted and it never connected with the townspeople, for better or worse. But I strongly urge you not to do that this time. And, and what's important in the process again, which didn't work well with the school building committee was it's important that there be an open and transparent process and selected candidates for this committee and then creating the committee. That happened finally in the second go around school building committee, but there's also a difference between the outcome and, and, and intent. Because we didn't get a committee for the school building committee that reflected the community. And that could happen again here, and I urge you not to do that. So thank you, I'm listening to be us with respect to the fire, fire building committee. As far as the budget process, I'm encouraged by what I see so far. I think it's important for the Board of Selectmen to work directly with Christina and CIP and the Board of Finance on vetting out what CIP projects need to go forward, particularly in year one, and then what the schedule will be looking out and how that ultimately impacts the budget, and I look forward to your progress in that area. Thanks so much for everything you do.
I'm doing the whole thing for progress. Anyone else? Online? Seeing no one online, raising their hand. Uh, thank you for that Pete. Correspondence, I don't have any correspondence that doesn't go with something else right now. First selectmen status report, Willington Day. The committee has begun to form. Melissa McKinnon has stepped up once again as a former member of that committee. It was a committee of one, so I have asked her to get in touch with the Parks and Recreation Department, and she will be working with them, but we will also be looking for other people in the community to step up and, and assist them with that. I believe the fire departments have already been contacted to run the concessions and have agreed to do so. So the fire departments are stepping up and, and we will be advertising for more positions, so if people are interested in that, please. Cybersecurity, cybersecurity has become a bigger and bigger issue. The town side as well, working in conjunction with the education side of the building, have chosen a vendor as a cybersecurity insurance agent. It, it allows us to recover should we have a cyber attack. Our people at Novus are partnering the system and we are working with cloud-based products to further make sure that we are disabled completely. But that's what we're doing with cybersecurity. The towns memorandum of understanding with the union for a four-day work week expires two weeks from today. We've been working with the union with, are doing is instead of making a decision to go completely permanent with that, we're disbanding it at this time, we're extending it until July first, which is when the new contract takes place so that we can negotiate it instead of just either granting it or denying it.
I'm interested, by the way, on that, from what the public thinks of a four-day work week for, for town employees, service to town hall. Contact me, contact me, contact Andy, let us know what you think. It's hard to make these kinds of decisions without input and how this affects people, so encourage you to do that.
The Kirma, our town insurance company is, is coming next week, next week, this week? Thursday this week, I believe, Wednesday this week, to inspect all the town buildings, including the schools for insurance purposes, so we will be dealing with that on Wednesday. And the last, was it last Monday, a week ago today? We had a fire at the High Chase Assisted Living Facility. It was a small fire, the fire did no damage to the building, but the suppression system did. So it essentially wiped out half the building. We worked Chief Moore, Chief Snyder, and a number of people, including the building officials from here, the state staffer, human services from the state, the fire marshals both for the town and the state came in. It was decided that thirty-two people, thirty-two or thirty-three technically, forty-three?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three people were displaced. They had to be moved out of the building, we couldn't shelter them in place. So the town Public Works and Senior Center used their vehicle to move these people down to the roadway in where the town put them up for twenty-four hours. We will be recovering that money from the High Chase and, and state people. It was the State Ombudsman for Human Services.
Yeah, so it, they take care of the residents. Once it was decided the building was unsafe for the residents to be in, the state essentially takes over. But the town is on the hook because we're the ones technically closing the building. It wasn't safe for them to be there, they lost the kitchen, they lost the after heating out system. But we did make the agreement with them that we will get everything set up, running due the first day, and then they.
They would reimburse, they probably reimburse us. And as soon as we figure out the building for that, we should, we're expected.
Yeah.
It hasn't occurred yet, but it should.
Yes.
Soon.
Um, if I could just add, thank you to all the town staff that helped that day, it was a very hectic morning.
Yes.
Pete was there at two thirty in the morning with us, and then I woke everybody else up in town by seven, so.
We had a good turnout by both departments.
It was a great collaborative effort between the entire town.
If I'm not mistaken, statutorily, that's our responsibility to do that kind of thing, right?
Yes, sir.
And find places for the.
Correct, so we had the emergency management director find the housing. Roadway Inn was capable of handling everybody from that facility. And then the state worked very quickly and very well to get everybody replaced into different homes. Twenty-six were moved by that night, and the rest were moved by noon the next day.
Okay. I think that covers the status report on that for right now. Uh, did you print the Public Works letter? The letter?
I have it in email.
Let me see if I can find it, my email?
I have it right here.
Alright.
Thank you.
How did I get fifteen emails in months?
You were a very popular, here it is right here.
Alright, you wanna read it?
I sure will.
Okay.
So Troy sent over his report this morning. Public Works has been patching potholes, cleaning catch base bins, maintain, maintenance of mower and prep for spring, maintenance and washing of trucks, painting and maintenance of plows, roadside mowing, chipping brush. They finished the roof inside it, siding of D, DPW carport, it is complete. They installed the bulletin board at the town office building for human services and parks and rec. They installed a new cross culvert on Daleville Road to fix the drainage issues. And they fixed a sinkhole on the gravel portion of Mason Road.
Yes, they did. My truck on the second pass. Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Now we get to new business. The state's citing council for which the town has no say, has cited a new five-megawatt battery storage facility on Blair Road between Blair and Village Hill. The property extends up into Stafford. The, the access road to get to this facility will actually be on the Stafford side of the line. The facility itself will be on the Willington side of the line. The reason they're building this is to take the peaks and valleys out of the power supply. So at peak power usage, they can add power to the system and at low periods they can pull power from the system so that we don't have to build more power generation facilities. And during the presentation we got, it was also pointed out that many green generation facilities aren't stable. So that the wind power doesn't generate when there's no wind, and the solar generates very little when there's no sun. So you wanna store that power and use it later, that's what this facility is for. They've done a sound study on where the sound will be for it, it'll be a hum from a transformer. I believe when they're pumping power out, but I'm not sure about that, somewhere or the other. And the reason I'm bringing this up, because the town has no say over it, is that the company that's building it is willing to put on a public talk on their sound and environmental impact if the town is interested. So if the town is interested, please let me know and I will contact the company for a presentation. How much sound, how much sound are we talking about here? It's a, it's a, it's like a the transformers on the bolts.
It was.
It's, it's lull. As a matter of fact, I think that the line where you can hear, human hearing effects doesn't reach any of the residential properties.
Have we had any input from the, from the residents in that area?
We have not. Uh, we don't, it, the the state doesn't take input, the, the citing council decides where it's going. Pardon me?
Any pilot funds in, you know?
Uh, so there is tax funds for this, it's a private concern. So it's, the pilot is for state concerns, this is a private concern, which is another thing I need to talk about. Did you have something to put in my?
I have a couple of comments on this.
Okay, one of the things is that we may need a new ordinance on taxation to level the taxation on this project and other major projects that may come down. These high-end these, these capital intense projects also have the taxes front-loaded. So what they, they've been doing in other towns is they've been tax-loading so that you pay fewer taxes at the beginning and more taxes at the end. So that the tax load evens out over time, much like this battery is doing for the pilot system. So that the town would collect as many taxes, but they'd be able to decapitalize it.
We suppose it's gonna be in existence for the exit, for the entire lifespan.
Right.
It may or may not.
Uh, the way they're building this, I'm, the lifespan is not excessive, so.
I get it.
If, if they can't make it last for the lifespan, they're not making any money, is what it looked like to me, but that's a question that.
Yeah, I'm interested, I know Mike wants to talk, I'm interested in, in.
Having a presentation.
Sure, I mean. After our fourth selection meeting. Maybe the Conservation Commission is interested in understanding any, are any impacts of this or expected marginal effects?
Uh.
I have something to say about it.
Oh, the one thing I want to tell you is that I did question him, all the access roads are, are fire truck accessible. They do have pull-offs so that you can pass each other going in and out, and there's a turnaround at the end so you don't have to back out. They will provide training for the fire departments, both initially and annually after this, to make sure that it goes. Uh, they, part of it was, he said you don't wanna pour too much water into the one that's burning, because what it does is it picks up all the, the the waste product, chemicals, and floods them out into, into your environment, but if you let it burn, then the the containers will hold at all? You just wanna keep the ones next going from catching fire?
Pete, before you, I just have one question, can we find out what the address is going to be? Cause the address is going to determine whether we need to.
Good question.
We need to have a agreement with Stafford if we're gonna be the ones responding?
Yes, there was an address. But I didn't think of that, and I think it's Stafford.
So we need to figure that out.
We need to figure that out, because if it's a Stafford address.
Yeah.
Mike?
So, yeah, confirming a couple of different things, I had a couple of conversations with the chief and with our fire marshal because I was in training last week for these facilities. And with an engineer from Tesla, as a matter of fact, and there's a lot of detail we don't need to go into tonight about how it works, how the firefighting works and all that, we'll be sharing that information here. They have offered us training, there is a little bit of room for public input to the citing council decisions. The thing is you have to be watching for it to get your input, that's a task, or that's that point. However, it does seem that the designs these days, they've gotten very conscious of the public outreach and concern about fires. And the designs have, from an engineering viewpoint, have, have progressed a lot. So I'm feeling encouraged about where this is going. And it is right, the driveways in Stafford, the site is in Willington, so we'll have to work that out, and as overhead power lines going down to Blair Road to tie in to the power lines over there, and there are multiple locations, this is going around the state. So there will be oppor, there'll be opportunities for us to share information from all the communities.
I believe we're one of the, they're building three initial ones and we are.
From this company, and there are others that are happening around the state, from other companies and other locations. And yes, the, the key is to not wash all the chemicals out of it and down the road, and actually water degrades and causes short circuits, and actually can make the fires worse enough, so. Important training for the fire department will be coming, I'm sure.
I am hoping, we're gonna avoid that. I keep hearing voices in my head.
Oh, is there?
No, it's on there someplace, I think.
Is there tree removal and, and is it, and, you know, because Blair Roads, that all those residences?
I believe so. But the way the land is owned and being leased, I don't think it'll affect any of those residences.
Okay, but there will be more wires like having any fires around those homes or near those.
No, no, it, it goes directly from Blair Road along, so the piece is, the whole piece goes from one road to the other. Right from Blair all the way over to Village Hill, and the, the road will be on the property coming in this way, and the lines will be on the property coming this way, leased property. So it won't affect any of them.
It'll be almost invisible, if you look at the citing council information, it looks like it's almost invisible.
Yeah, it looks like a big driveway, and then nobody will see anything else.
Why did we miss the vote on public input?
I don't know, this started long before me, I, I got a notice that.
Was it P and Z at least, four or five months ago?
I would say, and I think we had discussions about it about a year ago. So I know there's been discussed, this isn't a new topic, but.
They came to using.
Might be to the people.
It's, it's new to me.
Might be to the residents, yeah.
I, I missed it prior to them sending me a letter. Okay, so that's power storage, moving on to B, assessment time waiver. We have received a letter from Cable Technology requesting an exemption to the time, file time for their property. Uh, they missed, they did not file on time, they did not file for an extension in time, and they did not file for a review in time. And so they went to our assessor. And the town assessor had told them that their option, their last option right now is under Connecticut General Statute Section twelve dash ninety-four E, which I have here if you wanna read it.
No, it's okay, I trust it, but it'd be.
I have read it, and, and it's not I read it several times because it's not as clear as I would like, but essentially what happens is that if you don't do that, there's a twenty-five percent penalty.
Penalty charge, yeah.
Penalty charge, so all we would exempt them from is the penalty, they can call for an exemption if they have experienced a hardship.
Right.
And it would do the town good to keep them in town. And seeing as how they're going concern, I think keeping them in town would be a good thing.
If I'm not mistaken, they had a health problem with the owner and.
Right, the health, there was a long-term health problems with the owner, who I believe passed away.
Yes, he did.
Which is how our assessor found out that they had a hardship.
Yeah.
And with the new owner, and then they've got a new bookkeeper, let's see, a new accounting manager. Uh, they missed the, the timeframe, so the total penalty. We don't have an exact number on that because it will be uh, calculated with the new
Yes.
military, which has not been set yet, but it will be in the vicinity of six thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That's fine. And do I? Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to, to waive the penalty fee associated with not filing and not filing for review on time. We're estimating that to be six thousand three hundred and.
Four hundred and several.
That's six dollars, if it ever be adjusted later on, we can adjust it later on.
Okay, I will second that motion, any discussion?
Discussion, sounds like a good plan to me, you know, they have hardship, the law says we can do it.
The law says we can do it, I don't have any discussion either. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Tax refunds from the assessors, from the tax clerkage office. Oh, we have a pile. So I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of
One hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Yeah. Shannon said that's not the interest, right?
Correct, the interest is not, it's just the.
Right, so the motion does not include interest.
Correct.
We will refund the property taxes in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents to Sean Barrington. Adjusted refund at the recommendation of.
At the recommendation of, of the revenue collector.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Oh, this is for excessive payment, paid too much. I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and eight cents be made to Danny Pansiera for a refund of excessive payment.
I'll second.
You can move, alright, any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of one hundred and twenty dollars and two cents be made to Tara Le Bond for refund of excessive payments.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents be made to Justin Atkins for a refund of excessive payment.
Uh, second.
Discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents be made to Vault Trust for excessive payment.
I'll second.
Discussion?
We'll discuss.
All in favor?
All.
Aye. Uh, I move that we refund property taxes in the amount of seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents be made to Kelly. Seventy dollars and eighty-eight cents be made to Kelly Wilson. For refund of excessive payment.
I'll second.
Discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that concludes that portion of tonight's activities. I need to sign those, I will do that following the meeting. Um. The next topic I wanna bring up is the stage upstairs in the common room. Uh. I'd like to remove it, but I want permission from the full board to do so. The reason I'd like to remove it is number one, it's a tripping hazard. Number two, it reduces the. Uh, occupancy. Maximum occupancy level of the room. And third. I want about two feet of the right-hand side for storage space for the registrars, and it would make uh. The construction of that space considerably easier. Uh, I believe the cost to the town would be negligible, the uh. Public Works said they could do it in about two hours. The drawback is that the floor will look ugly until we get to Florida. Which isn't in CIP until year two. The stage was originally. Uh, constructed when the room was used for the senior center and put on their. Whatever, their presentations. It's also limited headroom when you're standing on the stage, because I believe when it was built, the drop ceiling wasn't there. So, I would like to remove that.
Good with me, I open the public comment, maybe you have an opinion on it, but you know.
Go ahead.
Have you made an assessment for asbestos yet? Cause that'll blow your project budget through the roof.
Uh, I don't believe the tiles up there are asbestos, but I will, I will.
It's often, it's often the cleaning again, yeah.
Alright, we will, we will check for asbestos before we blow it off. Good point, point well taken. Seen Dallas, I thank you for that, make a note, please.
Especially because that's a sign of early voting, you know.
Yes, yeah, and that's that's another reason I wanna move it is because it will allow the.
More space.
Make more space for for voting and. We've got a lot of voting coming on.
But Pete, the question I would have is how, yeah, the question I would have is. How uh, how unusable will the flooring under that be?
I think it'll be usable.
So people will be tripping up and down.
No, I don't believe so. We, we.
And we're with the practice tent dancing now.
Yeah, we, we don't. We'll figure out something so that that space will still, will be more usable than it currently is. I'm hoping.
Interesting to see what surprises under that platform.
Yeah. It may be a, uh, it may be good for.
Ratsness?
Yeah. Hygiene too, to get rid of it, it's all, we will check that.
There'll be a time capsule, right?
Yeah. Which brings us to the fire building committee. Which Pete spoke to at the beginning here, I have a draft document for a charge on this committee. It, I've been tweaking it almost daily to take into account the uh. Wants and desires of. Those who will be. Affected by it and including the town and Pete, so. Uh, I have increased the number of townspeople on the board. To at least match the number of fire department people on the board, I I I hesitate to go too much beyond that. Because once the committee gets beyond a certain size, it 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 doesn't. It's not showing the speed, I also took into account Chief Morse. Issue, and uh, so I would like to. I will read this first, this is, I I'm reading it as a motion, but I I am not making it as a motion.
Right.
Alright, I move to agree.
We'll, we'll, we'll just talk once again.
Yes, 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 that, so. As soon as I read it, then I'll go into my, what I wanna do for next steps, and we'll see if we agree, and. Uh, the motion is to create an emergency services building committee, which will consist of ten members made up of three. Two voting and one alternate members representing the Wellington Hill Fire Department. Three, two voting and one alternate member representing the Wellington Hill Fire Department, uh, Wellington Fire Department number one. One member from the Board of Selectmen, one member from the Board of Finance. And two members from the community with minimal or no ties to either fire department, and preferably with some capital planning and or construction experience. One non-voting, non-committee member will be a recording secretary. The charge of this committee is as follows. One, identify emergent fire department facility issues, develop and initiate a plan with consideration for immediate and long-term needs and financial responsibility. That would be covering.
Yep.
Your issues. Engage both fire departments, fire marshal, selectmen, emergency management, police and any. And any similar agencies to understand current and future programmatic needs that might drive facility need. Three, review previous studies for information related to service needs that affect facility needs. Four, review previous studies for information related to condition and effectiveness of current facilities. Five, determine and recommend engagement of consultants. Or similar professionals to assist in the following. A, collect and evaluate data on historical emergency services slash public safety needs. Based on type, severity and location. B, pursue any available forecasts for future emergency services. Public safety trends or demands based on type, severity and location. C, discern any opportunities to meet programmatic needs of the town without unneeded duplication of resources, programs, et cetera. D, determine best location for resources to address those needs as effectively as possible. Using currently available town and department properties or alternate locations known as station location study. I believe that we will be heavily cited on. Using current locations owned by fire departments is. It's, we want to keep costs down.
Already owned is.
Already owned is, it's gonna be a good thing, yes. Six. I I'm sorry, that was an aside, it wasn't. Six, recommend use of currently available funds to further design effort. So, for both short and long-term projects. Continuingation of the Wellington Fire Department One design work for Station thirteen. At four twenty-six River Road, continuation of Wellington Hill Fire Department design work for twenty-five Old Farms Road. Note that those two projects are separate and can move at different rates. Develop and recommend an emergency services facility plan or building plan of major capital items for all related services. Including pricing estimates. Eight, seek information on and support pursuit. Of funding including but not limited to donations, grants, state and federal funds and local funds. Nine, seek design contracts for any portion of the emergency services. Facilities plan that are approved. Ten, seek construction contracts for any portions of the the plan that are approved. Eleven, communicate progress of committee work through public meetings, outreach forums, et cetera, as appropriate through the turn of the committee. Twelve, provide assistance to and oversight of work in the town's name up to delivery of completed projects. And thirteen, provide a final report once the committee's work is done or no further progress is expected. So, this is my proposal. Not to move this tonight. I propose that we table it. We will publish it on the town website. And accept public input until the next Board of Selectmen meeting. At which point the entire board should be here, and I think that this is a big enough project that. We should include the entire Board of Selectmen.
I agree, I have some comments.
Go ahead, uh, why don't we? Post this and then we will work on comments. Leading up to the next. Board of Selectmen.
That's fine.
Alright?
What was number one, I'm sorry?
One, identify emergent fire department facility issues. What do we need to do right now?
Is that, is that like the, the possibility of the study or?
Right now, that's, the study is, I believe, step. Four or five.
You had a lot that were about reviewing stuff, reviewing test studies.
Right, and then there is one in here for for a future study, yes. And, but the emergent part is to see what we can do about getting our firefighters indoors. That's, that's, that's primary. Keeping fire engines warm. People dry. That kind of thing, that's, that's number one. Health, health and safety of our firefighters, to me is number one. After that, we can worry about where it's from, it's got the transmission. Um. So, we will leave that for now. And I do, I do encourage people to speak up, we can't accept every. Suggestion, but we will work through them. As a town.
Do you want me to close this draft with some minutes?
Yes. And we will talk to the tissue about getting it on the website, if there's a separate area or stuff like that. I think there is. Um. So, moving on. F. Tricentennial Committee. Uh, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. I had been encouraged by Mr. McCoo to form a tricentennial committee. Uh, I was. Informed by the former first selectman that a committee had already been formed. So, I went back through the. Written record, and on March twentieth of twenty twenty-three. The Board of Selectmen created an ad hoc committee for celebration of the Wellington three-hundredth anniversary. So I am changing the name of this committee to the Wellington three-hundredth anniversary rather than the tricentennial committee, to keep in in. Continuity with former decisions made by the Board of Selectmen. That's the only. Thing that I found buried, so. To date, nothing further has been done, therefore. I'm gonna make a motion.
Let's make a motion.
I move to staff the Wellington three-hundredth anniversary committee and appoint the Director of Parks and Recreation. The Town Historian, and a member of the Historical Society.
You agreed to this already?
Yes. That's why I'm staring over my glasses at you. Uh, membership will also consist of representatives of the fire departments and up to seven community members. Position openings will be advertised. The Director of Parks and Recreation will be the acting chair, he is aware of this already and has started the research. Luckily, the two seventy-fifth. Celebration Committee left us a four-inch. Three-ring binder full of stuff.
It's enormous.
Yes, which the.
I know, I help make it.
I know, which the, uh. Our, our young and very energetic Parks and Recreation Director has found great joy in.
He's very excited.
He will be, uh. Gearing up on that forthwith, and then he should already be, uh, contacting some of the people who have. Who I've told will express some interest.
He saw that folder in his eyes, where is the biggest lawsuit?
We already have.
This is a motion, we already have it, but I am, I'm, I'm moving to staff it.
Okay.
Would you like to second the motion before I talk anymore? Any further discussion?
Uh, no, not that I can think of, I, 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 I didn't know that we had one, so that's good.
Yeah, I didn't know we had one either, that's why, uh, I wasn't informed, go ahead, Bob.
First meeting for that committee is already set for six o'clock on the eleventh.
There we go. We are.
Only been asking about it for a year.
Yes, so. Took me three months to get going, but I'm going.
Great, it's good.
Thank you very much for your service, Bob, and we will abuse you further in future.
Thank you so much.
Oh, sorry.
So, so that.
Can I just comment quickly?
Yes.
That the. The town has had a history of some pretty good acknowledgements of these, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um, was one year off from the bicentennial of the United States. And so those two years rolled together nicely, we had carnivals both years, all sorts of good stuff. Um, and then the two seventy-fifth anniversary, we did pretty well, we had a parade down in South Wellington, number thirty-two. And, uh, so I think, you know, it's an important, the the three-hundredth anniversary, I'll try not to call it tricentennial, pardon me.
Me too.
Um, is, uh, I think a great opportunity to acknowledge all the things that are great about this little town.
I think so as well. So. We will let that committee take charge and.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next one's only whisk on.
Mister, Mister McCoo had my brain watering off.
It's my fault.
Oh, it's always your, it is always your fault.
Thank you, Mike.
Wellington Woods contract. So. I am looking for. Here we go. Um. Authorization from this board to look into a new contract with Wellington Woods. The original contract with Wellington Woods. Was signed by. Uh, first selectman. Eldridge. Uh, back in eighteenth of August, two thousand nine. Uh, the contract. Has an opener every five years following that. Although we have never opened it. Opening meaning, the opening meaning we can renegotiate every five years, um. The contract provides for a thirty thousand dollar cap. On. What we can charge Wellington Woods for water.
Signed contract has never been amended, says thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, signed contract that has never been amended says thirty thousand dollars. Since that time, the price of water has gone up. So we have been spending. Approximately forty thousand dollars a year on water and being reimbursed thirty thousand. So we're losing about ten thousand dollars a year. In water, because we haven't renegotiated the contract.
We haven't renegotiated the contract, Pete. Why hasn't the town renegotiated the contract?
These are very good questions, for which I wish I had very good answers.
Thank you.
I do not. It has come to my attention, however, that it has not been done, so I would like to do it. Uh. The other thing that it, this covers is, is septic. And we did not have a contract for septic upkeep. Until. Two months ago, when the septic system stopped working, and they had to go out every eight hours to. Manually turn on the pumps and keep our residents from swimming, so. We now have a contract for septic, uh, maintenance. Thank God it's not me. I got within about twenty-five yards of that thing, I had to ask things about. Um, so that is part of this contract as well, so. I'm moving that we authorize me as the town representative to look into renegotiating the contract, who will vote?
Uh, I'll, oh, that's the motion, right?
Yes.
I'll second the motion for discussion, so that, that means that if it's two thousand, what, nine? And then every, every, uh, five years. Two thousand fourteen, right? Nineteen. Right, so.
Okay, we should have renegotiated about three times or four times, I mean.
Right.
But we haven't.
Okay. Alright.
I have contacted the lawyer. He is giving me some first steps. Uh, and I don't believe we're gonna be able to recover the ten thousand dollars you've been spending. Because it, it's per contract and the contract wasn't renegotiated, but I would like to stop the bleeding with the very nice.
I, I agree, so, uh, so I'm gonna call a vote on that?
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so, that leaves, I think, one year to do this, right?
Uh. No, no, it's every five years, we haven't done it for, we can do it anytime, because you can't do it more than every five years.
Oh, you can do it more than every five years, it has a window.
No, 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 there isn't a window, it's every five years you can renegotiate. And it just hasn't been done, so, we're gonna look into that and get it done.
Got it, now I understand.
Uh. Oopsie report.
I have to go to you, I, did you not take? I have to go to you. I, did you not take it?
Oh, I thought it was gonna be in the folder.
I thought you had it.
I'm sorry.
No, I'll read it.
Thank you.
Uh, report from State Police, February of two thousand twenty-four. There were two hundred and seventy-six calls to troops see for service, thirteen accidents, eleven criminal investigations, zero burglaries, zero larcenies, one hundred and fifty non-reportable matters and six arrests. Motor vehicle enforcement included a hundred and one total traffic stops, one onsite DUI, two arrests, one misdemeanor summons, fifty-three infractions, fifteen written warnings and thirty verbal warnings.
I believe most of those are up by the interstate.
There was one that was, they ran out of town when a drunk kid goes through the center.
Uh, I don't believe he was drunk. It was, he was in excess of a hundred and seven miles an hour though when he was clogged.
I feel like there was something on board there that wasn't.
There, there's something that wasn't right, but I don't believe that he was charged with anything.
Oh, he was charged, but not
Not with intoxication.
Not intoxication.
With uh engaging an officer in pursuit and all kinds of stuff. Took out all the power and felt horrible for a while. Blew out the furnace at, at uh Willington Beach, I told him. It's been an exciting month.
Yeah.
What is it about our polls?
I believe we've had a couple of untimely deaths in town too that I'm just hearing rumors about. Uh, when it comes to the police report, the only thing I'd like to add is that uh I'm going to discuss with the talent town manager ways of getting better reporting from the state police, uh, more granular report on what's happening in our town. Uh, I know he's pushing for that in talent, and I think that if we develop a report in concert so that they only have to come up with one report or one format for all their talents that, that would make it a lot easier on them and, and probably make them look like more willing to go along with it. I'm, I'm familiar with the software that they're using, so when they tell me they can't do something, I
Okay.
I'm also attempting to get ahold of our, our, our the ASON officer who works eleven P M. to seven A M. when I'm not here. So that's the monthly report. The Bolton Assessor Contract. Bolton Assessor Contract.
The background as we share our
We share our assessor with the town of Bolton. The time on this contract goes from uh, one October to the, the end of September instead of on a any kind of year, and it's a three-year contract. They're asking for some changes in the contract, which I am not enough of a lawyer to understand what they're doing here, so I really need to talk to the lawyer before I I make any decisions on that. But uh
the high level view is that they're looking to expand it a little bit too big.
So, we but we are already paying for training. I don't wanna be paying for training twice, so we're gonna uh figure out how then, how to, how to uh budget that and put it into our our town finances. So, I don't know what I need. I will look into it and I will come back at the next Board of Selectmen meeting when all of us are here with more information.
Right. The only thing I would say is if we back up, back up some of those items.
Yes. So. We will, yeah, I wanna, I, I wanna understand what it says before I even start thinking about signing it.
Babe, is that a fifty-fifty share or?
It's a fifty-fifty share, I believe, yes. Yeah, so on that topic, fifty-fifty shares, we are also uh sharing a building official, and we're sharing a animal control officer. And it turns out that the Capital Region Council of Governments is currently looking into ways uh legislatively from the state to make it easier to regionalize uh three functions of the town, those being building officials, assessors, and animal control officers. So I'm right there with them. I need to speak to some of my fellow town managers, selectmen, et cetera, to see if we can do something with that. The animal control is one of my first concerns. We currently have a vehicle that we're not utilizing that we need to keep it running. Uh, I've got it back to running shape. Uh, so I've got the public works using it to run errands just to keep the oil moving. The state has changed their uh requirements for what a, uh, animal control facility needs to have. And uh, the Department of Agriculture has come in and told us we have a hundred thousand dollar worth of upgrades to do, but we have a five-year limit. We have a five-year timeframe to get them completed. So, uh, that was their guess. Troy's looking at the requirements now to see if we can meet them for a lot less money. There are stuff that, that I don't think anybody ever worried about was whether like dogs and adjoining runs could give each other diseases that we now need to take care of. We the state inspector said we have a roof problem. Troy can't find the roof problem. He says there's, there's no roof problem that he can find. The uh gutters were backed up. Those have been taken care of by public works. I've uh passed Troy with keeping an eye on that building. The building is currently kept up by a volunteer. And we have one quarter, well, less than one quarter of a animal control officer. And the share agreement is, is haphazard at best, so I need to talk to Stafford and Talon. And figure some of this out. Go ahead.
Um, perhaps this is a conversation for your associates at CROG also about the Department of Ag requirements to see if there's an opportunity to get some relief at the federal from the federal level, because I'm beginning to hear this is becoming a problem for towns everywhere that all of a sudden their facilities, some not very old, need to be revamped at quite an expense.
I believe it's the State Department of Ag, so
I, I thought it was federal.
They might be reacting to a federal.
I, I thought it was federal, but don't quote me on that.
I think the guy I talked to was under the state and, and he the, the Department of Agriculture has a department for overseeing animal control officers.
And the reputation of the inspector for around here is to be very, very detailed.
Yes. We will discuss that at some further point. So
That's the end of the Bolton.
That's the end of the Bolton contract. Now we're coming to the appointment of Laura Rodriguez to the, to the Conservation Commission. Laura Rodriguez approached the, the Conservation Commission, she attended a meeting. We have a letter from Kathy Demir's, Chairman of the Willington Conservation Commission, asking us to uh, appoint her to the commission. They currently have one regular and two alternate vacancies. Would you like to read the letter?
I, I, I can read that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm saying is because I'm, I read it off.
Dear, dear Board of Selectmen members, she currently has one regular and two alternate vacancies on the Conservation Commission. This month, Laura Rodriguez attended our meeting, expressed interest in serving on the commission to help protect and uh, and improve the local environment. She has been a resident of Willington for over twenty years and has a notable history of offering her time and talents to our community. She currently serves as the Director of the Willington Scholarship Foundation Dollar Trip Scholars Program, got mine in the mail. And recently served uh on the Board of Education, twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. Laura has PhD in science education and is currently Professor of Science Education at Chicago State University. Her doctoral dissertation, this is uh, twenty twenty was on inter, uh, intergenerational collaborations on community conservation projects. In the past, she held a position at Hall School, seventh and eighth grade grad, grade uh, science teacher. Our members feel that Laura would be a valuable addition to the Conservation Commi- Commission. Her spirit of volunteerism, knowledge of science and expertise and education would be helpful as we continue our work to protect the town's natural resources and open spaces. We strive to also involve more of our youth and their families in environmental education and conservation activities. At our February first meeting, the Conservation Commission voted unanimously to recommend the Board of Selectmen that to the Board of Selectmen that Laura Rodriguez be appointed as a regular member. Bill of current vacancy that uh, has a term of twelve-two, so second twenty twenty-two to twelve-one, December first, twenty twenty-five. For contact information, I'll thank you for consideration. And uh, uh Kathy Demir is online as well, so.
Kathy, would you like to speak to this? Oh, that's Laura. There's Kathy.
Hi, um, yeah, I think it's just as we said in our letter, I think uh Laura would make a terrific um, member of our commission, and we hope that you will consider her for appointment.
Thank you. Laura, would you like to say anything?
I guess first I'd like to thank Kathy and the, and the other commissioners for such a lovely letter. I did, I had not heard it, so thank you for reading that. Um, so it speaks to my background, um, but I, I just think it's very important to do whatever you can to help your community, and I thought this was um, a, a really good fit for, for both of my passions, you know, education and also um, environ, the environment and environmental science. So, so thank you for that. Um, and, and then one, you said you got your appeals in the mail, so that's great. Don't forget, we have our spaghetti dinner coming up in March, so I'll just do a little plug there too, and that's it.
We'll put that in a minute, okay? Yeah, couldn't, couldn't walk there.
Um, so I, I was interested, uh, what did you find when you did your dissertation um, on intergenerational uh, uh, conservation projects?
Oh, I had quite, well, there are quite a lot of findings, so it, it was a very interesting project. I was, actually, I was looking at how these projects affected both teenagers and adults what's called STEM identity, their, their sense of themselves as being people who can understand, use and contribute to science. And uh, the results were, were very positive. We found so many positive outcomes of pairing um, high school teenagers with adults, many of whom were on conservation commissions, um, and having them get to know each other and come up with a project that they felt would benefit their communities and then um, actually implement those projects, so.
Yeah, in our, in our rural town, I think it'd be wonderful if we could have collaboration with our students and our conservation commissions in our, in our rural environment. That'd be great. Thank you. I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry.
Well, I tried, I tried to give you the short version. I could have talked your ear off, so.
So, given that, I would like to move that we, uh, let me, where, where's my piece of paper? I move that we appoint Laura Rodriguez to the Conservation Commission. For, for the term of uh, it, for a term ending twelve-one, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
We already had it, I think.
I think so too. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much, Laura. I think you look forward to some work because I don't know if Kathy told you we're already looking at projects.
Great, looking forward to it.
And I, I would like to see that move forward. Okay, so I keep losing my space. Union contract. The uh, not the town of, but the organization in town of the town employees has approached the town for uh union negotiations, initiating union negotiations. They've asked for some initial information. I've spoken to our attorney and we release that? Not yet.
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, because we didn't talk to them until this afternoon.
Attorneys, we talked to, release what?
The union is asking for information on our employees.
Okay.
And uh, uh, time in service, uh, time with the town and payroll and that kind of stuff. And so we, I wanted to check with our attorneys to, to make sure that we were free to release all of that before we did. He said that it, they asked for the standard absolute list of information. Uh, some of it doesn't apply to our town because we have so few employees. And some of it, we will discuss with, with the union, whether they really need that information. But I am letting the board know that the union contract negotiation has not, we haven't started negotiating yet, but we've started worrying about the going.
Okay.
And I would like to include the entire Board of Selectmen in on that, as well as inviting a member out to Board of Finance on the town's side of the negotiation. So uh, we will be contacting Bruce to find somebody for that.
Bruce Lowes, Bruce Low.
Pete, do you have any idea of the dates? Because we've kind of heard vague references all along.
May.
May.
Uh, the the union representatives I've spoken to are much more confident that our lawyers will show up than theirs. So we will
That seems to be the answer.
We will uh do what we can to, to move this along forthwith. I believe the contract expires June, last day of June. Did I talk about the four-day, I, I already talked about the four-day work week at the beginning. Going long enough that I can't remember an hour.
Nothing continued until this, this July?
Uh, the current contract expires July thirtieth, uh, June thirtieth, and the new contract will take effect July first.
In the four-day work week, sunset.
Sunsets in two weeks, but we have
It's a temporary.
Temporary program until we can get it negotiated in the contract.
Or out of contract.
Or out of one of the
Yeah, I've, I've heard a lot of comments uh, from town people um, regarding that.
All right. Well, that's
We'll have it, we'll have it hidden in.
Yeah. We will have a discussion. So, that brings us to the town budget. Unfortunately, due to our lack of ability to form a forum, we didn't have a, or less Board of Selectmen. So we did not formally move to accept the budget that we presented last Thursday. So I would like to move that we accept the budget that we presented last Thursday so that we have that on record that has been presented. Unfortunately, time marches on with or without us.
Right.
And we needed to get that to them.
Well, there's no requirement that it be voted on here before it goes, before maybe presented to them.
Re-presented to them. But I, I believe that if we, if we uh approve it now, then that will signal to the Board of Finance that we're approved. So I move that we, we
All right, I'll second your discussion purposes.
All right.
So um, so regarding the budgeting process, um I think it's pretty clear to everyone in town that this budget is gonna be higher than, than the last one. Nationwide, I think the inflation rate nationwide last year was about three and a half percent. Um, I think Pete, you indicated that uh
They told us six point two seven.
Was the, was the Connecticut inflation rate.
Yes.
So the value of our money has gone down, and the cost of goods has gone up, and that's impacted all of our everything. It's probably gonna impact our, our contracts as well. So, um, I'm under the assumption that, you know, after we approve our Board of Selectmen budget, there'll be some, um, at the Board of Finance, there'll be some rationalization and discussion about how we move forward.
Yes.
Who does what?
Well, absolutely. That's their their charge.
Right, as elected officials of the town. Um, so on the budget thing, I, I'd like to be able to, to have, when we have, we have school issues, we have dog town issues, we have uh, fire department, fire department issues, we have um, you know, inflation issues. dog town issues, we have, um, fire department, fire department issues, we have, um, you know, inflation issues. Um, we have road issues.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it'd be really helpful for me to have, um, the CIP Chair Christina come to the Board of Selectmen, you know, along with Board of Finance and just have a discussion with us. Doesn't mean that it has to be permanent.
Yeah, she's, uh.
We can just discuss this.
She will be appearing in front of the Board of Finance Thursday. Uh, I believe she's.
Presenting this.
Someplace in the Caribbean right now or something.
She's away, right?
Yes, she is.
She's enjoying her life.
Than I am right now.
Living her best life right now on a sailboat somewhere in the ocean.
Or it's warm. Yeah, um, so, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
We have, we will invite her to the Board of Selectmen when she returns, but she is also appearing in front of. Yeah, I believe they're holding another CIP meeting Wednesday, they've got one scheduled for Wednesday. And they've got Board of Finance on Thursday, and I believe she's appearing at least the Board of Finance Thursday. So, I, I would recommend that we listen in on that discussion so that we have at least a base of knowledge to ask questions.
Correction, no, she is not going to be at either of those.
She's not going to be at either.
She's, she will not be back until the following week, so she, we moved the, but we amended the budget calendar, the calendar and passed that to have the CIP presentation on the fourteenth.
Excellent, thank you for that.
So on the seventh, we'll be getting the business manager's, uh, revenue setup and then.
Got it.
Start discussions.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction, because I was still working off an old calendar or something. All right, so that ends that discussion. So we are back to President to speak, does anybody else have anything? Uh, let's start, or, let's go and start with Bob and then we'll go to John.
Bob Shabbett, seventeen, Jared Sparks Road. Uh, would like to touch on, uh, what Peter started, uh, the meeting about talking about, about fire stations. I would hope that when we start moving forward with the fire stations, that the study that was done that doesn't seem to have been made public insofar as where the services were required in town, that that would also be part of an open discussion. So that nobody's holding their candle under a bushel.
Right.
We, we need to have complete transparency. And just my opinion as a citizen and a taxpayer, I wonder if it's not time for the fire services in Wellington and the community in a whole start thinking about building one fire rescue or fire emergency station and one substation.
We, that, that would, I, I would hope that that would be one of the products of this. So the, the, at least the exploration of, of all these, these options.
Well, one of the things.
And, and to put out as much information as we can.
Well, one of the things that is quite clear, living in this area of Connecticut all my life, is that most towns have one station and they have a substation. And I know the firemen, the two stations are playing a lot nicer than when I came to town. They can actually come to a Board of Finance meeting, both in the same room, that never happened before.
But.
One.
Well, it did.
Have their time when they came.
Mm-hmm.
That was the way it is. Well, now that they're playing a little bit better together, I think that needs to be taken, taken into account. And I think they can even play better together.
Thank you, that's my goal, once a month, bring them together, they can play nice in San林s. Uh, John?
John Blessington, twenty nine Mason Road. Uh, during tonight's meeting, your first live one brought up a, uh, plan to take out the stage upstairs and, um, it sounded like everything was going good until a member of the audience brought up a very important issue. I'd like to point out that in the previous regime, that would not happen because it was the job of the audience to sit there quietly and marvel at the wisdom of the, uh, the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, I like, I like this change and I, I've heard it said in previous meetings that this board is not uh, transparent, not open. Well, that is a big part of transparency. Uh, we've had quite a few people speak to the issues here tonight and we didn't have a problem with it and a lot of uh, important information was, uh, traveled. Now, another thing I've heard, the previous first election person has complained that you don't have President to Speak at budget meetings. Well, that's okay because she never did either, but I don't know what her complaint is. But you don't need President to Speak, uh, at budget meetings if you will allow the members of the, uh, of the public to speak up during the meeting and to speak to issues which are before you. I don't know where she came up with the idea that you as the Board of Selectmen are the only ones who can speak because prior to her, this, this is why meetings were always. So I think you're doing the right thing and I just wanted to make that.
Thank you. Mike? You had something?
I thought.
Oh, I cut him off.
Okay.
Progress.
So, uh, going back to, uh, the fire building study, whatever, I don't remember the name used, but you, we know what we're talking about here, the building committee.
Um.
We changed the name from facilities to building because that's how the.
Because you want to tell it sounds.
What it, we gave them some money, we, I'm willing to take it under any name that you give us.
Right. Um, the, uh, I am very much in support of the idea of getting public input. As you know, I've encouraged you for weeks to get this out to the public. Um, I am, uh, I'm a little concerned about us adding another two weeks.
Yes.
Um, because we've been adding weeks and months to this thing, we've been talking about it. The situation developed with four twenty-six River Road last March. Um, whenever we think about what level of emergency it is, it's not getting to be less of an emergency as we keep adding weeks.
Um, I understand.
So, I think the, the input's valuable, the decision's already been made tonight, but I guess what I'm trying to say emphatically is let's, two weeks from now, can we please get this thing moving?
So, can I speak to that for just a moment?
Please.
The reason I'm adding two weeks to it, and I, I didn't want to add two weeks to it, I would have liked to have passed this last month, is that I think that this is a lot of money. It's a huge problem. I want to include the entire Board of Selectmen on it, in on, on the discussion. And I do not want to make it look like I'm cutting out the other party on this, which is what it would look like. Not my intent, believe me, but I want to make sure that all the selectmen are represented before we make a, a move of this.
Completely understand that, I'm just saying, next week, can we try not to find another reason we need to.
Yeah, I will, I will do my darkest and we will.
We're, we're coming into spring now, if we want to, and even if a temporary solution to help get their people undercover by next winter, we're running out of time to do anything by next winter.
I, believe me, I understand you and, and, and the pace of government is. We, we, we move at half the speed of smell.
Okay, so also, um, to Bob's comments before, yes, uh, if the recommendation comes from this group to the town to do the facility study, if the town approves it, we do the facility study, which I really hope we will do. It's, it's a incredibly valuable part of due diligence, then it absolutely has to be a public. Because if then the study or the committee is going to lead to now coming back to the townspeople to ask for money for work on these buildings or some combination of these buildings, um, that due diligence is going to have to be a very valuable part of that conversation with the public about why we think a certain thing should happen or a certain amount of money should get spent.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry we're holding up by two more weeks, but I, I thought that it was important because we were still getting input as of yesterday. So I, I want to take as much of that into account as I can. Yes, Michelle?
Um, Michelle, thank him. I just wanted to, um, both, while I'm acknowledging that I appreciate your informal tenor here and, and the way we have various, um, conversations, and I appreciate that. I do want to remind both the Board of Selectmen, the Secretary and everybody in the audience to be careful about how you speak about other people in town, about whether their home, whether their home is empty, whether they, all of the types of personal information that people have talked about very casually tonight about personal information, snarky information, disparaging information, slander is not something we take lightly. And I don't think that that was your intention, but you should be careful about your words in public. These are reported, they are available for the public.
Thank you.
Loaded. Thank you very much. Any other, uh, Melissa?
Hi, thank you, I just wanted to introduce myself, um, for the Wellington Day, uh, sixty-three Lucian Road. Um, so if anybody wants to join the committee, they can reach out to WellingtonDay@AOL.com to reach me and, uh, join the committee. That's it.
You could also reach out to Shannon in my office and she will refer you to Melissa and we will root the heck out of you.
That's right, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Very much for, for, for taking this mission on, Melissa, it's, it's a big job and I'm glad you're doing it, thank you.
Melissa, can you just email that, uh, address to me at some point?
Yes, of course, yep.
All right. Um. No further President to speak, any further, well, uh, Pete?
Uh, thank you. Peter Wiltender, ninety-seven, Fats Road. I want to agree with the sentiments expressed in the second round of, of President to Speak on the need for transparency. I totally agree with it with respect to the, uh, call to Building Fire Committee, if that's correct. Um, I am, I'm going to echo my earlier concern about what you're proposing and I realize you're just starting and I think that two weeks are well worth the time, but I'm concerned about the composition. If my notes are correct from the discussion you had earlier, we're going to have six firefighters, four, uh, voting and two walk tenants, two town officials, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for a total of eight, essentially the government, for lack of a better word, um, and then two townspeople.
Yes.
That does not sound, with all due respect, very balanced to me and I, I strongly urge you
I, I consider the mixture here, that's something more representative of our community. I am taking into, into account your concern. I am also balancing that with the number of people on the committee, I want the committee to be small enough that it can move. And I, and I really see the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen members as townspeople. They have, they have already, by the fact that they've run for office and taken office, shown a considerable concern for the, the community, for its financial well-being, for the general well-being of the town. So I, 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 I'm not ignoring you, I will take that into account. And over the next two weeks, I'm hoping we can make some minor tweaks to this and see where we're at. All right? Uh.
Steph.
Stephanie, I want to tell you Suzanne all.
More white robe. Yes, I know, well, she's the one with the thigh master.
You should have listened to her.
I'm just parroting myself, like, I get to do this.
Carry on.
Okay, first of all, first of all, I'm gonna, I'm going to agree with Pete because, um, and I know you're, you're going to hear more about this and you're posting it and I understand there's a process. But the way I counted it, you said Pete, ten, so three, three from each fire department, one of them is an alternate.
Right.
Um, Board of Finance and a Board of S, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then two public.
Right.
So that's one-fifth of the committee is public. And, and I, I hear what he's saying because I'm just imagining these two people coming in and there's all this officialdom. And, and six of the ten are insiders, if you come to a vote, I think, I, I'm not sure all six of them will be seated because you said two alternates.
Yes.
But they might be present.
Two of them won't be seated, yes.
Even if they're present, four of them vote, you know, um, I just feel like that's heavy, heavily weighed and there's been a lot of discussion in that group anyway, they're going to be represented. I think they both should do what you do when you're, when you're fielding a softball game, pick your captain. You know, pick your, pu- pick your best communicator and the person who talks to your folks and put that player in. And then open it up for, you know, more people that we don't even know maybe are interested and knowledgeable about this idea, that's my thought.
All right.
Okay, and then, um, on the spending, uh, on the budget, I just want to say that, um, I know the state, uh, communicated a six point two seven percent spending cap or however you want to say it, of inflation rate. But I just want to say that we have to be really careful about that number because it is, it has exemptions attached to it that are in statutes. So I'd recommend you revisit the statutes closely. Because those exemptions are special ed spending, which in this budget is at least two hundred and fifty thousand additional because of the transfer out of special ed students. And then all, in addition, it's a whole capital.
Right, I, I, I'm hoping. I am hoping that the Board of Finance is, is the one taking the lead on that rather than the Board of Selectmen.
I just, I just want to be sure when we're the one figures out that we're, that where, it's not like, it's not, it's not as tight as
Right.
people are making it out to be. Um, and then the, the other thing though I'm curious about is what you guys have to say, and I understand the contract is, is up for negotiation, but what you have to say about the way raises are being accommodated in the planning or are they, or is there a placeholder?
There is a placeholder. And, and I, I.
You don't want to discuss it publicly?
I don't want to discuss that in a public meeting.
Okay, um.
I will.
Are there people who will be aware, who might actually have to vote on things?
Yes, and, and I will discuss that with people who might need to be aware and will be voting on things.
Because when we're talking about the overall, um, growth of the spending.
Yes.
Or the plan, spending plans, that's a crucial number to know.
Yes, and where, where, where the shock absorbers are built in.
Yes.
You need to know all that.
Right, okay, and the last thing is, um, approving Laura Rodriguez on the Conservation Committee. Great, I think that, that's like a superb, um, example of someone who's like.
That was kind of a go-to brainer.
She's got, it, well, it kind of is, but you know, she, she's got like, uh, connections, science connections locally and globally, if you will. So I think it's going to be, you know, it sounds like a real, uh, potential for growth, um, and who gets involved in conservation projects.
I, well, I would hope so.
So.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, one last comment on the makeup of the committee, I think this public input is really important and I think whatever the makeup is ends up being is great. Um, because the firefighters, I'm sure are seen as we're hearing in these comments and seen by other people as having a very specific vested interest in things. I just want to leave one last comment, and that is that you will not find any people more committed to this town and more members of the public who care about this town than the people who run into the burning buildings in this town and the people who do CPR and the people having heart attacks in this town and go out on the icy highway in this town. So let's just remember, if you want to commit into the community, the people who have been doing it for I don't know how many decades and forty years myself are committed to this town. Respecting the vested interest.
Mm-hmm.
We agree.
Okay, I, that's, that's why this is not an easy task. And, and why I, I'm not committing to anything right now is because I don't want to commit to something without thinking about it first. I, I, I know I need time to think. Sometimes it cures.
Couldn't Welfare?
Couldn't Welfare.
Do you have any good things? I do not have anything for Good and Welfare other than how people live in, uh, in, in a little home down there next to the, what I can't remember what you call it.
The Hydrate.
Relocating Hydrate.
Yeah, they've all been relocated, they were all relocated as of like within twenty-four hours. The human servant, state human services ombudsman.
Ombudsman's office.
It's office, Melissa's.
Marie.
Marie?
Yep.
I, it, which is not really Maria, it was something.
I don't know if those.
But they did a phenomenal job at the state taking.
They're all sappy, yeah.
They're all sappy, no, they're all. No, 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 they're all out of the hotel within twenty-four hours.
But they've all been put back in here, they've been relocated to homes that got handled the services.
Yes.
That's the only good.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you had that part.
No.
I, I skipped one step ahead. So do I hear a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
What the painful all?
Thank you very much for your time and, and.